Evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Smithtown Planning Board is now in-
The United States of America. And to the Republic of which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We thank you. Can we wish everybody a happy holiday season? And we'll go on with the reading, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The first item on the agenda, the Planning Department recommends the following items for adjournment as we have insufficient information to act upon them. Part one, item one, number 2011-10, Anthony Leteri. Item three, number 2010-06, KVC Holdings. Item four, number 2009-05, FB4 Realty. Part two, item five, number 1059, Prestige Estates. Item six, number 1,000A, Soundview Estates. Item seven, number 773 Scholar Estates. Item eight, number 922 Sesame Estates. Item nine, number 1053A Burg Estates. Item 10, number 911A Glen Hill Northern. Item 11, the 280A application of Olivia Estates. Part three, item 12, the letter of interpretation for the Polish National Church. Mr. Chairman, these are the items the Planning Department recommends for adjournment.
Is there anybody here to be heard on those items to be adjourned? Hearing none on motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the items read.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Mr. Chairman, we'll now move on to part one of the agenda. Item two, number 2011-01, All Seasons Motor Lodge. Mr. Chairman, this application was brought before the board at a public hearing for the Planning Board on May 18th of this year. The item was adjourned pending an onsite inspection by the board, which I believe that the board has completed. We do have an evaluation and conditions of approval for this application. Planning understands that there may be some questions regarding the conditions of approval by the board and may have additional conditions you may wish to impose. Therefore, after I'm done reading the conditions, if you wish to adjourn, by all means do so. The evaluation of the application. The advantages of the application. Approval will encourage orderly maintenance of the property. Approval will permit the continuation of a business use. The disadvantages of approval would be: Approval will permit a potentially obnoxious use to be located closer to residential properties. Approval could set a precedent for rezoning similarly situated properties. The Planning Department recommends approval of this petition and offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board recommends that the town board approve the change-of-zone petition of number 2011-07 of All Seasons Motor Lodge for a change of zone from R10, residential 10,000 square feet, to WSI Wholesale and Service Industry, subject to the following conditions. One, approval does not imply approval of any existing or proposed site plan. Two, approval does not imply that any existing structure has or should be granted certificate of occupancy approval in its current condition. Three, a landscape buffer shall be established along the southern boundary of the property to a depth of 100 feet. No paving, structures, or dumpsters shall be permitted therein, except that the existing single-family structure with garage, driveway, and deck shall be permitted to remain if approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is under condition five below. All landscaping and fencing in the border shall be installed as directed by the Board of Site Plan Review. Four, onsite drainage shall be installed so that runoff from the driveway entrance shall not empty onto a public roadway. Five, the property owner shall make application to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a certificate of existing use or other permission to retain the existing single-family home on the property. Six, all lighting on the property shall conform to current site plan standards. All lighting shall face downward to minimize potential impact on the residential neighbors. Seven, the sign on the east side of the building at the northeast portion of the property shall be removed and replaced with grass or other landscaping materials. Eight, the site shall be cleared of trash, unregistered vehicles, and other unsightly debris. Nine, this change of zone shall not go into effect until the petitioner has complied with conditions five and eight to the satisfaction of the Planning Director. Ten, the expansion of the WSI zoning is being undertaken to allow for the legalization of the current structures and uses. No additional or expanded use of the property to the east of the existing buildings and parking area shall be permitted. Mr. Chairman, this is the Planning Department's recommendation for the zone change position number 2011-01, All Seasons Motor Lodge.
Is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. I've had an opportunity to read the Planning Department's recommendations, and I've also sent them to my client. So we ask for your favorable consideration in this matter.
Is there anybody here in the audience which is to speak on this application? Members of the board, any questions?
I had a question. Is there any way we can get some compliance from the applicant before making a recommendation to the town board so that we can see that there's some good faith on their end? Because based upon my site inspection, I'm not aware of any other site in the town that's set up like that there, and it's not really acceptable, in my view. And I just wondered if there was any way that we could put in place, perhaps adjourning the matter, to allow them to clean it up a little bit before we rule on it?
Essentially, it depends upon what you're asking for, but if the board is in the past, and this has occurred in the past, on a number of occasions, the Planning Board and/or the town board has declined to rule on a particular matter until certain specific things were accomplished that are identified on the site that, you know, they would not pass. That's certainly within your prerogative to, as a board, to do that. The only thing I would mention is if you have specific items that has to be addressed so that the applicant knows what those items are that can be addressed.
Because I believe we've done this particular precedent before on a particular property on, I think it was Town Line Road and 111 right by the high school when there was a zone change application put in, but we made a requirement that there be a cleanup prior to us hearing that matter again.
You're correct.
For example, number eight, the site should be cleared of trash, unregistered vehicles, and other unsightly debris. That would be one. The landscape buffer could be another, because the residents to the south of the site were very concerned about the impact on their homes. Those are just two things that come to mind that would at least address some of my concerns about this particular site.
Any other member of the board?
I agree with the matters that were just brought up.
Yes. I have a couple of questions here. Is the applicant that you represent, is he the original owner of this property, or has he come in here some later date?
My knowledge is he's been the owner for probably 25 or 30 years. I don't think it's a new owner.
Because I think the desk was concerned with the board when they did the onsite, that the site there has been sorely neglected. And to ask the town board to extend something there without any comment from the landowner there, to be able there to convince the town board that that's what the concern was for members of the board. And I know that I went there on at least two or three onsites, and I was not happy with the sites as they appeared. But certainly something needs to be done to that property. So is there any objection there from the members of the board to try to see if we can get this to work by the recommendations there from the Planning Director? And any comments?
I think, I don't know what Mr. Derubias would feel, but perhaps we could adjourn the matter to allow the applicant to try to comply with at least some of this and bring it back. I don't know how else we could handle it.
Well, I think we should identify what we think the applicant should do, and certainly cleanup of the site is warranted. I mean, that's what we did with the other site that Carl mentioned, that you expected that site to be cleaned up, and that's certainly one of the items. We're talking about landscaping. It's the middle of, it's the winter now. We can't landscape. I mean, it's not going to be, we wouldn't recommend that. The, well, what I could do is I could ask Blaze to do an onsite inspection and come up with a listing for the board, and then send it to the board to see if those are the items that you were looking for, and-
Something reasonable that shows a significant good-faith effort on the applicant's part that we can say, okay, now we can be comfortable recommending to the town board what you want to do.
And also, part of that would be removing the dumpster, I imagine, back there also. That would be in good faith, too.
Okay. What we'll do in the interim, if the board adjourns it, I'll prepare, I'll ask Blaze to do an onsite, prepare a list, if we could do some photographs of the area as well, and then I will distribute that to the board, and if the board could get back to me so I could get, talk with the applicant's attorney, and we'll say that's, if these items are taken care of, then the board will consider the determination, if that's okay with the board.
Fine. So ultimately, there'll be a list of the things that you would want done immediately, and I can get that to my client, yeah?
As fast as you can get them done, yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
A motion there for an onsite for the Planning Director?
To allow Planning to do an onsite, right?
Yes.
In the matter of All Seasons Motor Lodge, motion to adjourn for the Planning Department to do an onsite inspection and make, and recommend corrections for the Planning Board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. We thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we'll now move on to part four of the agenda. Item 13, transfer of density flow rights, number PR1, for Brent J. LLC. Mr. Chairman, this application for a letter of interpretation was brought before the board earlier this year, and the board did find that the applicant was entitled to density-flow-right credits. The purpose of the hearing this evening is to have the board approve the actual transfer of these flow rights from the approved site to a receiving parcel located in Smithtown. The receiving parcel is receiving the rights in order to comply with the minimum requirements of the Suffolk County Health Department. There is no construction actually taking place on the site itself. Pursuant to Section 323 of the Town Code, the applicant is proposing to transfer 2.25 density-flow rights from a parcel known as Suffolk County Tax Map Number 37-2-16.4, the sending parcel, to the above-referenced 53,670 square foot, 1.23 acre parcel or receiving parcel. In August, the Planning Board issued a letter of interpretation determining there to be three density-flow rights available on the sending parcel. The proposed transfer would allow the applicant to operate a gymnastics center in building number one on the receiving parcel. The proposed sending parcel is located on the south side of Overton Pass, 426 feet east of Three Sisters Road in St. James. The property is an irregularly shaped 144,378 square foot or 3.3 acre parcel with a single-family dwelling and detached garage with an apartment above, zoned R21. Approximately 2.2 acres of the site is steep slopes. The sending parcel is identified on the transfer of density-flow rights map as being within a sending district. The proposed receiving parcel is located on the north side of Main Street in Smithtown, 307 feet west of Edgewood Avenue. The site is zoned neighborhood business and is developed with two buildings. Building number one is 11,800 square feet and was previously used as a retail store. The applicant's proposed to use 10,110 square feet of the building to operate a gymnastics center. The remaining 1,770 square feet will be used for retail. Building number two is 6,850 square feet and is used as a real estate office. According to the applicant, the maximum allowable sanitary flow on the receiving parcel is 805 gallons per day, and the proposed flow with the proposed gymnastics center is 1,475.1 gallons per day. The proposed receiving parcel is not located within a mapped receiving district. The Planning Department has reviewed the application for compliance with Section 323 of the Town Code and has found that the proposal meets all of the standards described in 323-10 for the transfer of density-flow rights. The applicable standards are described below. Two, no transfer of density rights shall be approved without written authorization from the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. The Planning Department has received notification from Suffolk County Health indicating that they have authorized the transfer of 2.25 density-flow rights from the sending parcel to the receiving parcel. Seven, a separate deed conveying the sending parcel to the town of Smithtown or another governmental or land trust organization approved by the town board or deed restriction, that is conservation easement or declaration of covenant and restriction, must be filed for the affected sending area before rights are sent from that property. The applicant has drafted a declaration of covenants and restrictions that states the sending parcel shall be delineated and designated as open space, shall remain as open space for the express purpose of protecting the aquifer and water supply, and shall be kept in its natural state in perpetuity, excepting only property maintenance activities as may be appropriate to effectuate the foregoing purposes without impairing the essential nature and open character of the premise. Once the town attorney approves it, the covenant will be filed with the deed to the sending parcel in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. Nine, no transfer shall be approved unless the receiving board determines that it is consistent with a comprehensive plan as described in Section 263 of Town Law. The proposed change of use and the preservation of environmentally sensitive land as open space are consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. Eleven, the total flow on each receiving parcel shall not exceed two times the flow that would otherwise be permitted if no density-flow rights were transferred. Based on the information submitted with the application, the maximum flow that would be permitted if no density-flow rights were transferred is 805 gallons per day. The proposed transfer would allow a flow of 1,476 gallons per day, 134 gallons per day less than the double-density limitation. Sixteen, if the sending parcel is in a sending district, the rights may be transferred to a receiving parcel outside of a receiving district. The sending parcel is an undeveloped parcel that contains slopes greater than 15 percent, and therefore pursuant to Section 323-4, is considered to be within a sending district. As a result, density-flow rights from this parcel may be transferred to a parcel outside of a receiving district. Eighteen, if the sending parcel or receiving parcel is located in the local waterfront as defined by Chapter 151 of the Town Code, the transfer shall not be approved unless the town board determines that the transfer is consistent with the local waterfront revitalization program. On December 13th of this year, the town board adopted a consistency determination finding the proposal to be consistent with the LWRP. After reviewing the documents submitted with the application for compliance with Section 323 of the Town Code and conducting site inspections of both the sending and receiving parcels, the Planning Department recommends that the Planning Board approve the transfer of 2.25 density-flow rights from Suffolk County Tax Map Number 37-2-16.4 to Suffolk County Tax Map Number 76-2-33.1, and offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves the transfer of density-flow rights from, excuse me, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 37-2-16.4 to Suffolk County Tax Map Number 76-2-33.1, and authorizes the issuance of a TDFR certificate upon the Planning Department's receipt of a copy of the filed covenant. Mr. Chairman, this is the Planning Department's recommendation for the transfer of density-flow rights, number PR-1, Brent J. LLC.
Thank you. Give your name and address, please.
Yes, J. Timothy Shay, Jr., Sir Tillman Ballen, 100 Motor Parkway, Suite 156, Hapug, New York 11788. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I must say that Blaze stole most of my thunder with that very thorough report.
I'm very sorry.
And just as a reminder to the board, we were here in September, and on September 6th, this board approved a letter of interpretation allowing for up to three development credits to be determined to be sending credits from vacant land located on Rich's Road. Now we are back for the second half of our application, which is to allow for those credits, or at least 2.25 of those credits, to be transferred from the sending parcel to the proposed receiving parcel, which was previously used as a furniture showroom for rooms unlimited. The building right now is vacant and has been for the last six months. The proposal would permit a change of use of the building to a gymnastics studio for 10,110 square feet of the building, and dry retail for the balance of the building, which would be about 1,770 square feet. The proposed use as a gymnastics studio and the proposed use of dry retail are consistent with the zoning district. The existing footprint of the building will remain the same. There will be some interior alterations and upgrades to the sanitary systems, but there will be no further construction to the building to enlarge the footprint of the building itself. As Blaze has indicated, we have provided the Planning Department and the board with draft covenants and restrictions, which my client is willing to, both the sending parcel is willing to enter into and file with the board if, in fact, the board determines that we would be entitled to receipt of those credits. As Blaze indicated before, we do have LWRP approval. We have conditional Suffolk County Department of Health approval conditioned upon the issuance of a negative DEC under SECRA by this board in conjunction with this decision, which we would then forward to Health Department for their records and so that they could, and also for the recording of the covenant, so that they could finalize that approval. I would ask if the board has any questions. We'll be more than willing to answer as many as we can.
Is there anybody in the audience which is there to speak on this application? Members of the board, any questions? I just have one. Has the covenant from the town attorney, has it been, has that been either filed or...
The town attorney has reviewed the covenant and finds that the content is appropriate for what we're doing.
So when do you expect there to-
Well, no, we do have the covenant. It's in a draft form now, so we've agreed on the draft. If this board approves it, then they have to file that covenant in reverberant. And once we receive the copy of the filed covenant, the rights are transferred.
So we, so there will be a filing of a covenant with, almost simultaneously with the approval of, or the expected approval of this resolution?
This is similar to a subdivision in the sense that the final approval does not take place till we receive the documents from the county clerk back in our office, and then that completes the process, and then they could go ahead and get their certificate of occupancy for the building that they wish to work with.
If I may, and I know this is new to me, and I think it's a little bit new to the board based on our last hearing, and I don't know exactly how procedurally this is going to work, but typically, just, we would file the, the board would issue a conditional approval, conditioned obviously upon our filing of the covenants. We would file, we would get the covenants approved, get them executed, file them, bring them back. We wouldn't be able to pull a building permit or do any work on the site until such time as we were in compliance with that, and there would be no, the transfer would not be effective until we surrender those credits by filing of the covenants.
Any other questions by the board?
When you do the, I guess, the retrofitting of this property for the gymnastics studio, do they have any plans on adding any landscaping to the area?
I believe that there was, in the WLRP, there was a, some additional plantings in the front yard that were required as a condition of that approval, if I remember correctly.
Yes, there were some plantings that were, you're correct. There were some plantings that were removed from the original approval, and we're asking the applicant to reinstall those. So that, I don't have the details with me, but I could forward them to you if you're interested.
All right, good. So there will be plantings, a long Jericho Turnpike on Main Street?
Green it up a bit.
Greening it up, yes. Good.
Any other questions by the board? Motion there for the transfer of density-flow rights?
In the matter of Brent J. LLC, motion to adopt the resolution as read and issue a TDFR certificate in accordance with the recommendations of the Planning Department, and upon receipt of the Planning Department's copy of the filed covenant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered. We thank you.
Do we have a date to come back, or are we, we're done?
Done.
Okay.
Now you have this, whatever the site plan exemption, that's with Peter Hance, I think. We still have some stuff to do, but I'll be available afterwards.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under part five, number 14. The planting plan for the Prestige Estates and Soundview Estates applications. Mr. Chairman, these two applications were brought before the board at the last Planning Board meeting on December 7th. The applicant was making waiver requests for sidewalk street trees and, I believe, fencing within a conservation easement within the subdivision. At the time of the public meeting, at the last meeting, it was adjourned pending two things. Number one, a planting plan for the street trees by the Planning Department, which we did complete and forward to the board in your packet along with a memorandum. Also, at this time, we are still currently waiting for a submittal of a plan by the applicant regarding some kind of a substitution with regard to the fencing or the bollards along the conservation easement within the rear yards. Attached to your memorandum, there are two different landscape plans. The first one shows basically that a total of 79 trees could be planted within the area, assuming that there were no obstacles in the way, and the area was basically open space and the plantings could take place. The second plan shows roughly what the current conditions are at both locations for both the houses located on the corner of Nadia Court and Landing Avenue. And based on what we did see in the field, it looks like approximately 53 trees could be planted within the conservation easement on the south and north side of Nadia Court along Landing Avenue, which would leave approximately 26 trees unplanted and some other type of- of arrangement would have to be made for them.
Is there anybody here representing the applicant?
Benson Tramarko, 1038 West Jericho Turnpike, Smithtown, New York. What I didn't understand was, Blaze, you indicated there was a, something you're waiting for, the design of fence, or...
At the last meeting, you presented a proposal to put bollards with signs on it. And what I want to see is a specific annotation on a plan of exactly where they're going to be, and how many, what number, and how high, and whatever else you're going to do with it, or an alternate proposal. You showed me at the end of the meeting a bollard with a sign on it.
You're saying, what'd you say, bollard, Frank?
A post.
I can't hear you.
A post.
Okay.
Okay.
A bollard is usually concrete, that's why...
Okay. You had a post with a sign on it, and that was this picture.
Yeah.
And what I said was, we wanted an annotated plan. In other words, take the survey and give us a specific location and numbers that you were proposing for that, so that we could evaluate it. Or if you have an alternative, you know, this does not have to be on a post, we could accept signage of some sort, as long as it's permanent. In some, it could be on a normal stanchion, you know, or something similar. I have Blaze looking into how DEC does it with their other properties, and he could talk to you about that. So any proposal we could bring back before the Board that's specific.
Okay.
I did an onsite there a couple of times at this property, and the curve in that road, Frank, is not a good place for people coming out of Nadia Court to be able to view traffic coming either way, either coming off of Landing Road or coming down Landing Avenue. And that's, the landscaping that we've seen so far looks like it was meant there to be so that you could, they had planted, they had done some plantings in there, but they didn't come all the way out to where the drawings show. And I think trees in there are going to be a concern there for people seeing going up and down the road there when they come out. I could see maybe a bush or something like that. But a tree there, I think it's going to be an obstacle there for people. There's eight houses in there, or, let's see, there's eight houses now. I think there's another one that's getting started.
What I'll do is I'll take a look at traffic safety. I think you're correct, and the trees closest to the driveway or the intersection may be posing it, but the ones further south, I don't think. I think the ones within the first 100 feet that you see that are closest to Nadia Court may pose a hazard. I'll speak to the Traffic Safety Director. But if those are removed, you will still have a clear sight going, I think, down the road. But I'll, to have that checked out with traffic safety before we get back. What we were trying to do here was just show that you could fit the appropriate trees in this particular area. And as far as the other direction goes, we, I think, because I think the site distance, we'll take a look at that as well and respond back to the Board.
When we went there, we noticed this area here is all grass, and it's all well-maintained, and you can see easily, looking up north on Landing, and you can see it looking north towards Arthur Conns Park. I was afraid that if you put the trees out like this, that the people coming out maybe not, won't be able to see.
Well, we'll certainly take a look at it. Our rationale was that both areas were supposed to be natural, left in their natural state. But the Board, as I always say, safety triumphs other things, so we'll take a look at that and get back to the Board on that.
Thank you.
And I have another question, Mr. Chairman. The sign for the DEC, I think that that picture that we had, we saw last time at the last meeting is really horrendous, a sign like that. And I even wonder if there could be just some small metal sign, something that doesn't detract from the area, that could be placed, and just some simple sign and not something...
Well, that's what we're looking at.
Maybe on a metal post or something back further so that you wouldn't, it wouldn't take away from the neon lights.
No, no, I agree with you that a simple stanchion with a more modest sign could be acceptable.
Something tucked away, so it doesn't look like it's a national park.
So I asked, Blaze was away, but he, I asked Blaze to check with DEC to see how they approach it, and I think something a little simpler might work better. But in this particular case, we want to see what the applicant was proposing, because remember, the original thing was to put a fence up, and the applicant's requesting a waiver of that particular fence, so we want to see what they're proposing to do and then respond to it from that.
This would be at the back of the property?
Yes, along the scenic east.
In other words, just there so that people wouldn't come off of the county property and not know where they're going, or the people there would be, they'd know where the limits were for their own property.
What we're trying to avoid here is the same issue we had with the Berg buffer, if you recall. The applicant wanted a waiver, and we came up with several suggestions, and then they rejected each of those. So now we're just saying, you tell us what you want, and then we'll evaluate it from there. But we're trying to give some flexibility here. I do happen to agree with Barbara. I think a simple stanchion, a more modest metal sign, something with earth tones on it that would blend into the scenery would probably work out better.
Absolutely.
Mr. Tramarko?
I'll report, I'll report this to my client. I think the reason why we did, my client did that type of a sign was, it's kind of, I don't know, earthy and woodsy and that kind of a thing, so he felt that the environmental people would like that more. But we'll, you know, we can, Blaze...
I think a simple anodized aluminum sign with a smaller sign, just so it'd be delineated. But what it will do is between now and the next meeting, if we finish contacting DEC and find a sample, we'll send it to you.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to talk on this application? No? Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, one more question. Are we also going to say then that we need that many trees on the sidewalks?
He's gonna look, they're gonna do a look there at the curve in the road.
What we're...
Correct?
Yes. What we're going to recommend, by the way, is, since the street trees are essential, either we plant the street trees there, our recommendation is going to be a contribution to the street tree and highway fund for the equivalent. So that's basically, but we're going to, the other items, we'll let the Board make a decision on.
Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I believe there's somebody, do you wish to speak before the Board?
Some people here, you wish they'd, would you come to the microphone and give your name and address, please, and what this is about?
My name is Laura Schaefer. I live at 233 Old Comack Road in Kings Park. I live across the Parkway from Power Crush, KVC Holding, Carlson Associates, they go under many names. Since I bought my house in 2004, my neighbors and I have made thousands and thousands of complaints to the DEC. They do mulch there, and it's a horrific smell. A lot of children in the neighborhood have been born with either autistic, the ones that have grown up there, I thank God I didn't have my children there, they either have AADHD. They spray paint mulch right out in the air, red and black and... We went, neighbor and I, because the neighbors and I, we've been getting together because we've been complaining to the DEC. Nobody's been doing anything. Actually, the federal government just emailed us back. We've had to go that far. We went to the Planning Department. The land that they're working on is zoned residential, so I'm curious with the Planning Board, how a residential area, it's a residential area, how they're doing business over there on a residential area, as well as the taxes. They're paying for vacant, residential vacant land. All these years, these people are paying no taxes, as well as poisoning the neighborhood and getting away with it? I just, I don't understand how, perhaps you can explain to me how that this is possible, because I really don't understand.
Are you aware of what she's talking about, Frank?
Very much aware. The property is known as Carlson Precast. It's located on Old Northport Road. The property is in an L-shaped dimensions with part of the property that was illegally mined, that goes over towards Old Comack Road, within actually about 150 feet of Old Comack Road. And I believe your property's on the opposite side of Winnie Comack or in that general...
Yes, because they took down the buffer. I was made aware of that by the investigator.
This started in 1991. It has been an ongoing issue, legal issue. The property was zoned residential, was reported to New York State DEC, because they regulate sand mining. I will tell you this, this is, we reported this when three acres of land was mined. An additional 17 acres were mined right after the complaint was raised by my office. That'll give you an idea of the response that we had here. The property was mined to the tune of about 70 feet down. It is substantial mining. The current owner, Toby Carlson, began, and this is what the cause of the problem is, a, using the site for composting, and according to DEC, they need a permit, which is called the 360 permit. In other words, the town does not get involved in this, DEC does, New York State DEC. It was checked with New York State DEC because there was odors emitting from that particular site, and the response from DEC was the odors are not toxic. However, from other people who have been in the area, the odors are obnoxious, at least, you know, they may not be toxic, they are, they're grass composting, basically, and it's...
Tons, tons of it, tons. I have well water, my neighbors have well watered there.
Okay, okay. Well, though, we understand this particular problem, but there's a legal question.
Let me just clear up. First of all, this is not something that we ordinarily handle, because the Planning Board only handles an issue that's been processed by the Planning Department. I understand your, I understand your frustration, but there's a lot that goes with it that we can't do anything about, but we can certainly there recommend your concern.
Even if it's zoned residential, and here's all the section blocks and lots, because they went down on Monday, and they gave a couple of summonses, Joe Nwadi, as well as Angus Graham, but he said he's only going to give five of the summonses. He's not going to do all the other ones till maybe a month or so. We went down there, and we videotaped the entire yard there. There is, Harris Precast is on there, this is residential property. Kings Park Cement, there's asphalt, there's rotting trees, there's tons and tons of mulch, different colors sprayed red, black. I actually have the video if you'd like to see it. But this is, all these complaints that we have made to Public Safety, the trucks go all night long, I have to call Public Safety. It's just ridiculous. And it had, to spray paint mulch without an enclosed area, for that paint to just be blowing in the air, that is toxic. Okay? We, you know, four, okay, sorry, four or five of the neighbors still have well water. Now, this guy, you know, has pushed back and gone down way more than 70 feet, because he was trying to mask the smell, because I was complaining a lot, then a couple of my neighbors. I mean, I have a girlfriend that moved off of Spring Road over to another road in Kings Park, because she's afraid her kids are going to die. The whole house smells. You can't have a barbecue. People get out of the car and they throw up on my driveway. So something needs to be addressed. If this is residential property, then all these section blocks and lots should be summoned. They should be fined. If I was building a house and I didn't get a permit from either the town or go to the Planning Department, you would shut me down. So they should go down and shut them down. They've had years, the DEC said, just be patient, they're cleaning it up. It's not. It goes on fire, massive fires across the Parkway, the fire department has to put them out. It's just, it's got to stop. It really does, because the whole neighborhood has started a petition.
Do you understand what I'm saying there? That I sympathize with you, because we've heard this before. The thing is that we don't enforce the codes. All we do there is handle the applications that are brought to us there for review and then make a recommendation.
Well, how do you approve an application for a residential area?
You'll have to go to the Town Board. I understand that you've gone to the Public Safety. Well, go to the Town Board and voice your same objections to the Town Board, and maybe the town attorney can enforce something that we can't enforce, okay? But that's the way to do it, that, you know, we can't enforce something just because we have a complaint.
Even, even though it's under residential? It's a residential area?
No, it's because it's not an application as before us. If there was an application before us, we could do something, but there's no application before us.
Okay, so we have to have the Town Board file an application?
I would have you go to the Town Board and present yourself the way you did tonight, and they are aware, and I'm sure that the town attorney would then there do something there in respect there to your complaint, okay?
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
You're quite welcome. And Merry Christmas.
To you too, sir. And to the boys.
January 3rd is the Town Board meeting.
No, I think she has to say, thank you. She didn't hear you. Excuse me?
This, January 3rd is the Town Board meeting.
Okay, is it here?
No, it's 2:00, the Town Board meeting room.
You have to see there from the agenda where it's going to be.
Is this the agenda?
No, no.
No, that's not it. That's just for tonight.
You could speak, it's going to be 2:00 on January 3rd in the Town Board meeting room in Town Hall. Were you at the supervisor's office today?
Yes, I was.
Okay.
We've been everywhere.
No, but the supervisor, the supervisor is aware of this. I would just let the Board know, because this has been a complaint.
But I just don't understand how the investigator went there and did right. I mean, what if, the problem here too is, they're paying taxes on vacant land. That is far from vacant. I mean, one of these women are dead 20 years that the land is under, and they're paying residential vacant taxes. So for all these years, while we're paying $10,000 and $20,000 a year, they're paying no taxes and doing all that? I just don't understand it. I really don't.
I would certainly speak to the Town Board about this, that's, as the chairman has suggested. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Blaze?
One last item, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The adoption of minutes for the September 21st, October 5th, and November 2nd, 2011 Planning Board meetings.
Motion to adopt the minutes.
Move that we adopt the minutes on September 21st, October 5th, and November 2nd.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Merry Christmas and adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So ordered.